Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Thursday, May 12, 2022. Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Counselor Kent?
Here.
Counselor Genetino?
Here.
Counselor Cuddy?
Here.
Counselor LaCastro?
Here.
Mayor Quill?
Here. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you remain standing for a moment, a silent prayer reflection. Thank you. Please be seated. Mr. Clerk, public announcements, if any?
Thanks, Mayor. We do have a couple of announcements this evening. The first is that the next meeting of the Nuisance Abatement Committee for the City of Auburn will be held on Wednesday, May 18, 2022, at 9:00 a.m. Meeting will be held here in Council Chambers in Memorial City Hall, 24 South Street. Also, the next Spring Cleaning Day for the transfer station where residents can bring several, you know, items are available to be brought down to the land, to the transfer station for free. There will be charge for items such as computer monitors or TVs, $10 apiece, and freon containing appliances, $45 each. But this free Spring Cleaning Day is Saturday, this Saturday, May 14. Landfill will be open 7:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. for city residents to bring things to the landfill, to the transfer station, I'm sorry. All rules will be enforced, and all the rules are listed on the city's website. The most important rule is you do have to be a city resident, and your identification needs to match the vehicle registration of what you're bringing stuff in with. So please refer to the website for the complete list of rules, but this is a great resource. And the next days will be held in the fall. And then, next Saturday, May is Tennis Month. And next Saturday, there will be a Auburn Tennis Festival, and this will be held at Clifford Park, Saturday, May 21, 2022, 9:00 a.m. till noon. There will be a celebration of the sport of tennis with programming for new tennis players at 9:00 a.m. till 10:00 a.m. Programming for tennis players with some experience from 10:00 a.m. till 11:00 a.m. And programming for advanced players from 11:00 a.m. till noon. There'll be also things, other things happening that morning, such as the band for Perform For Purpose will be playing, as well as some other children's activities throughout the morning. So please stop over at Clifford Park on Saturday, May 21, 9:00 a.m. till noon for Auburn Tennis Festival. That's all I have.
Very good. We have approximately four proclamations this evening, so we start out with the first one. Lake Friendly Living Awareness Month.
Thanks, Mayor. First proclamation tonight from the Office of Mayor Quill. Whereas the City of Auburn provides clean and safe drinking water for nearly 45,000 residents, whereas the source of the town of Wasco and City of Auburn's drinking water supply is Wasco Lake, a Class 88 designated and protected water body. And whereas in recent years, Wasco Lake has experienced widespread harmful algal blooms due to nutrients that promote and support the growth of algae and cyanobacteria. Whereas harmful algal blooms threaten lake water quality and the health and safety of water consumers. And whereas the Wasco Lake Watership Management Council is advancing pollutant reduction strategies by promoting land and water conservation practices within the Wasco Lake watershed. And whereas the foundation of the Lake Friendly Living Awareness Initiative is a pledge program that has secured commitments from Wasco Lake watershed municipalities, businesses, and residents towards improved conservation and the advancement of best management practices. And whereas the City of Auburn commends the Wasco Lake Watership Management Council's advancement of the Lake Friendly Living Pledge program and messaging that align with Finger Lakes regional messaging. And whereas the City of Auburn owns 450 acres of land in the Wasco flats within the greater Wasco Lake watershed, acquired with the express purpose of preservation of those lands for resource protection and conservation purposes. And whereas according to Resolution 102 of 2020, the City of Auburn took the Lake Friendly Living Pledge in solidarity with Wasco Lake Watership Municipalities, residents, businesses, thereby demonstrating the city's commitment to lake and watershed stewardship. And whereas a commemorative New York State legislative resolution to recognize Lake Friendly Living Awareness in the Finger Lakes region during the month of May was spearheaded by the Wasco Lake Watership Management Council and was adopted by the New York State Legislature on March 15, 2022. Now therefore be it proclaimed that Mayor Michael D. Quill, along with the members of City Council and citizens of Auburn, do hereby designate the month of May 2022 as Lake Friendly Living Awareness Month here in the City of Auburn.
Very good. And with us, I believe, we have Dr. Adam Efler. Is he with us here today? For Executive Director of Wasco Lake Watershed Management? No? In the back?
Seth will accept it.
Seth?
Seth is pretty hard to not pick you up or crow.
He's hiding.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. On behalf of the Wasco Lake Watership Management Council, thank you very much for this proclamation. I know Dr. Efler has worked extremely hard on this initiative. The Lake Friendly Living Initiative isn't just of Wasco Lake, although he was one of the founding members of, of the program. It's every Finger Lake across upstate New York. So, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Seth. Next proclamation for EMS Week?
Thank you, Mayor. Proclamation from the Office of Mayor Michael D. Quill. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas emergency medical services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trade members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of emergency medical services teams engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas the Emergency Medical Services Week theme for 2022 is Rising to the Challenge, and is an appropriate theme to recognize the value and the accomplishments of the integration of the new Auburn City Ambulance into our City of Auburn organization over the past 12 months. And whereas the establishment of the new Auburn City Ambulance Department was an initiative that took significant planning and implementation by several individuals within our City of Auburn staff, and upon the transition to the new Auburn City Ambulance in November of 2022, the city has been diligently served by our city manager, city comptroller, fire chief, ACA Director of Operations, the 25 full and part-time city EMS team members, and others providing administrative support in these cumulative efforts that have successfully delivered outstanding ambulance operations to the citizens of our city and the greater Auburn area. And now therefore, Michael D. Quill, Mayor of the City of Auburn, along with members of the City Council and the citizens of Auburn, in recognition of the service of our new Auburn City Ambulance Department, does hereby proclaim the week of May 15 through May 21, 2022, as Emergency Medical Services Week here in the City of Auburn.
Thank you. With us this evening, we have Kaziah Sullivan, the Director of Operations. And if not, Seth can accept this one also. Kaziah here.
Thank you, Mayor Quill and council. Thank you for recognizing EMS Week and for your continued commitment to strengthening emergency medical services in the City of Auburn. This year's National EMS Week theme, Rising to the Challenge, recognizes the commitment and sacrifice of EMS professionals who have provided care over the significant challenges we've faced in the past two years and will continue to face in the future. The work of the EMTs and paramedics that they're providing in the City of Auburn is truly an essential service, and I'm honored to work beside them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our third proclamation this evening from the Office of Mayor Quill. Whereas in 1962, President John F. Kennedy proclaimed May 15 as National Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the calendar week in which May 15 falls is National Police Week. And whereas established by a joint resolution of Congress in 1962, National Police Week pays special recognition to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others. And whereas Peace Officers Memorial Day, in honor of all fallen officers and their families, United States flags will be flown at half-staff. And whereas the International Association of the Chiefs of Police has declared law enforcement officer safety and wellness a top priority, and the IACP Center for Officer Safety and Wellness promotes the importance of individual, agency, family, and community safety and wellness awareness. And whereas there are more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving our communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of our Auburn Police Department. And whereas the members of law enforcement agency in the City of Auburn play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Auburn, New York. Now therefore be it resolved that Michael D. Quill, Mayor of the City of Auburn, on behalf of the members of City Council and citizens of Auburn, do hereby proclaim May 15 through May 21, 2022 be recognized as National Police Week here in the City of Auburn.
Very good. Chief Slate?
I've got bodyguards here in case Seth tries to come up. Mayor Quill, members of council, we appreciate this. The meaning for National Police Week for the police officers around the country is to pay tribute to those who made the ultimate sacrifice and died or became disabled in the line of duty. In 2021, across the country, 617 officers lost their lives in the line of duty. And that's up from 414 in year 2020. Also, in 2021, there was another 136 officers that committed suicide. So this definitely means a lot to us that police officers are recognized during this week. Today, we're able to swear in and pin six officers who will spend the next 20-plus years protecting the City of Auburn and its citizens. I commend them for coming forward and taking on this task in today's day and age, and it's nice to see their fellow officers, both on duty and off duty, to come and represent and honor them. Thank you again.
Thank you. So councilors, if you meet us at the rail, we'll do our...
First officer up will be Edward Pickard. He'll be joined by Edward Pickard Senior and Dejanee Nisbet. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye, Edward Pickard.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
New York. It still takes place. In the Charter of the City of Auburn.
In the Charter of the City of Auburn.
And I will faithfully discharge duties.
I will faithfully discharge duties
of the office of police officer.
Of the office of police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Next up will be Michael Bafano. He'll be joined by Maria and Eloise. Place your left hand on the right, on the right. Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. Aye. Please state your name.
Aye.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
In the Charter of the City of Auburn.
In the Charter of the City of Auburn.
And I will faithfully discharge duties.
I will faithfully discharge duties.
Of the office of police officer.
Of the office of police officer.
According to the best of my ability. We have Nicholas Gemm. He'll be joined by Greg and Joyce. Place your left hand on the right. Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. Aye. Please state your name.
Aye, Nicholas Gemm.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
In the Charter of the City of Auburn.
In the Charter of the City of Auburn.
And I will faithfully discharge duties.
Faithfully discharge duties.
Of the office of police officer.
Of the office of police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Next, we have Andrew Henderson. He'll be joined by Linda and Andy Henderson. Place your left hand on the right. Raise your right hand. Aye. Please state your name.
Aye, Andrew Henderson.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
In the Charter of the City of Auburn.
In the Charter of the City of Auburn.
And I will faithfully discharge duties.
And I will faithfully discharge duties.
Of the office of police officer.
Of the office of police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Next, we have Anthony Mastapietro. He'll be joined by David and Rose Mastapietro. Aye. Please state your name.
Aye, Anthony Mastapietro.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
In the Charter of the City of Auburn.
In the Charter of the City of Auburn.
And I will faithfully discharge duties.
And I will faithfully discharge duties.
Of the office of police officer.
Of the office of police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And next, we have Nathaniel Barnes. He will be joined by Christine Burgess and Robert Barnes.
Aye. Please state your name.
Aye, Nathaniel Barnes.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
In the Charter of the City of Auburn.
In the Charter of the City of Auburn.
And I will faithfully discharge duties.
I will faithfully discharge duties.
Of the office of police officer.
Of the office of police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
That was it? On my list?
So normally, at this point, we take a break, and no one ever comes back. Counsel took a secret vote. We're just going to keep all you here till we're done, okay? So, counsel, with your permission, let's take about a 10-minute break. Okay, we'll be in recess. Bye, everyone. Thank you. Mr. Lattimore, please. You'll be next. Gentlemen in the back, please. And we need your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Okay. My name is Kevin Kristofic, and I'm the property owner at 126 South Street in Auburn, and my address is 5616 Buck Point Road, Auburn, New York.
Very good. Thank you. Please, sir.
Okay, I'm going to be...I live next to the people that are going to have the historic review board appealed in regards to their shed. And I guess I don't understand if they followed all the rules, got the permit, got the historic board approval, certificate of appropriateness, why there was ever a stop work order on the shed, and why I can't continue. Because if it happened to me, we'd probably be in court right now, because to me, I just think it's plain wrong. He did all the...he paid all the permit costs, he paid all the other costs, he got it filed, he started building it, bought all the materials, and now you put a stop work order on it and want him to change it? That's just wrong. That's the way I feel.
I don't want to take your time up, so I've stopped a timer on you. In this portion of our meeting, we hear from the public, we do not engage in question and answer from this side of the bar. I see our attorney is here. I would suggest if you had the time, you would sit through the remainder of the meeting. We won't answer...we cannot answer your questions at that time, but many of your answers...your questions may be answered during...in the later part of...
Okay, fair enough.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else desiring to be heard? Mr. Lattimore, please.
Mayor, counsel, very nice ceremony tonight, very hard to find policemen today. Thank God we have people step up to the plate. But I just want to thank the firefighters and the police the other day. They were down on West Genesee Street. I know it was a very hot day. They had their uniforms on. It had to be excruciating, but they did a good job putting out that fire on West Genesee. And about a month or so ago, I had an opportunity where a baby was in peril, and they were on South Street, and I saw the action that was brought forth, and it was very successful. So, a hats off to the firemen and the policemen, and wish everybody well tomorrow. We've got the gratitude, the endurance thing going off early from City Hall, what, 8:00 tomorrow?
Approximately.
Yeah, that's a very nice thing that Mr. Papert does. And in regards to the fire, I think that one of the citizens of Auburn, Mr. Wilder, I think he was knocking on all the doors to make sure that everybody got out, and everybody did, so...citizens of Auburn are great, great people. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else desiring to be heard? Very well, we'll have a second publicly heard at the end of the meeting. And with that, we'll move along to the approval of meeting minutes of April 22nd. Start out with April 22nd. Do we have a sponsor? Counsel Cuddy, second by Counsel Kent. Discussion, corrections, deletions, please call the roll.
Counselor Kent.
Yes.
Counselor Genetino.
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy.
Yes.
Counselor Castor.
Yes.
Mayor Quill.
Aye. That's all we have tonight, then, okay. The other minutes will be on for next week's agenda, councilors. City managers report.
Thank you, Mayor. I have several things on the list tonight. I'll try to make it relatively quick. Currently, the city is accepting bids for the CDBG sidewalk program. Those bids are due back to us by May 24th. We're also accepting bids for general electrical work throughout city facilities. Those bids are due back on May 26th. More details about the bids and RFPs is available on the city webpage under the tab "Bids" and "RFPs." The city annual road program has begun, and we are seeing microservicing being conducted on several city streets this week. That'll continue for the next several weeks, more than likely. We try to remind counsel, if you hear anything from the public, we've received some phone calls here. When those streets are going to be worked on, typically a few days in advance, the residents and business owners are notified via a door hanger so that they understand when that work will happen, so that they can make appropriate arrangements. We've received some complaints that work hasn't started promptly at 7:00 a.m. in the morning. The reason for that is that we try to clear the street, because if there are vehicles still left on the street, it can take hours for us to actually get those moved. That is the logic behind clearing the street for an entire day, but that project is moving Staff has had some conversations with various councilors along the way regarding ARPA funds for human services agencies. So while we're here tonight, if it's okay with counsel, I'd like to just get some feedback from counsel on how you would like staff to proceed with that. Originally, when counsel approved $1.25 million for human service agencies, the thought was that it would be done through a competitive-type process, similar to what we're doing with small businesses. There have been some comments from counsel potentially interested in just doing...going through and taking that program and allocating particular amounts of money to identify human services agencies. So, in an effort to keep that moving along, I'm looking for your feedback on that, how you would like us to proceed. We are ready to roll out the competitive-type process that was originally considered. We think start to finish that entire process between advertising it, allowing time for responses, reviewing the responses, and then getting money out the door would be somewhere in the neighborhood of 60 to 90 days. So, again, just looking for comments from counsel on that, if you have some thoughts or ideas on how you'd like to do that.
Counsel Cuddy?
So, with yours...there's two options. One is the more competitive process, and one is more kind of, I guess, just look at where the need is and allocate money. Those are the options that you're offering?
Correct. Unless you've got something else...
A third option?
And then we can look at that. You know, one of the things that we are certainly trying to do is make sure we are compliant with the regulations, the federal regulations around how to disperse that funding. And if you'd rather have time to think about it, and we could discuss it next week, or however you'd like to handle it.
Yeah, I would like to think about it, just to, you know, go over...I mean, maybe there is a third option, which is a hybrid, where, like, I know the need is there. So, time...I see the value of just administering the money, but I also...can I think about it for another week?
Yeah, absolutely. We can bring it back for discussion next week.
So, I just would be interested in how we would do this in an equitable way. There's so many nonprofits, and each one is unique, so that would be my concern. And I agree, we could wait a week and think about it, but that would...you know, that came to mind, that we might miss something that we don't otherwise wouldn't know about, so...something to think about.
So, I'm going to wait. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm fine with waiting as well, and, you know, having everybody give some...everybody some time to sleep on it, think about it, come back and discuss it. I think that this is coming to the floor, because I sent an email a couple of weeks ago. I, for the second time in a few months, visited Nick's Ride. They have a new executive director. Things are really starting to progress there. I know that our police department is physically bringing people there that are in crisis. They need some gap funding to continue their mission. And Ashley's here this evening. They're doing great work there. Maybe I got a little emotional. I'll be honest. I was a little frustrated, understanding that staff has also been tasked with working with SITA to administer the small business money that we put out there. I'm fine either way. If there's...I think if there's an end in sight of how we're going to do this, I think that answers a lot of questions in the community. Again, I just having been there twice in two months, seen the good work they're doing, you know, there's over 100,000 overdose deaths in this country this year. They need help, and so I think this conversation's coming from me sending that email, asking what the progress was, and if we so chose, could we allocate a chunk of money to an organization? If I disrupted the apple cart, I apologize, but I'm fine with us waiting a week and coming back, thinking about coming back and talking about it.
Well, some...you know, again, time has passed since counsel allocated those funds, and, again, based on your experiences and the communications you've had with the community, we're fine to do whichever. We just need to have that direction.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm good with that. Thank you, Mayor.
One of the other topics is, and you may not have seen it, but later this afternoon, I forwarded counsel a list of potential projects to utilize in New York State Touring Roots funding. If you recall, New York State included approximately $1.5 million for the City of Auburn under the Touring Roots funding program that they have for the second year in a row. So we're currently finishing up projects from last year's funding. That money has to be expended by December, by the end of December of this year, and we're on track to do that with several of the projects, including East Hill and John Street, and I believe the South Street lights were part of that as well. The paving of Lansing Street by the hospital last year was done through that funding, if I recall correctly. So what staff did is they did a little brainstorming session, and we forwarded some ideas to you for your consideration. It's not necessarily all-inclusive or the end-all, be-all. If you have other thoughts or ideas, if you could get those to me so that we can try to get some estimates around them to make sure that, you know, that we know the financial impact, and whether or not the project fits the criteria for the funding, we'll work on that. But my thought was that we would also bring that to you next week for discussion here on the floor, so that we can get staff pointed in the right direction and start getting those projects underway.
Can I ask you a quick question in regards to East Hill? Does that include streetscape, like new trees?
Right at the moment, it does not. We did not think there would be enough money in that project, and off the top of my head, I don't recall whether or not that was going to be an eligible expense. We can look into that for...
Thank you.
Before I wrap things up, we also have a guest here tonight. Within the last week or so, Huguen County, Curious Strategic Solutions, CSS, brought on board a new CEO, Bradley Broadwell, and he's here in the audience today. I just wanted to give Brad an opportunity to come introduce himself. He'll be taking care of things at CSS and SITA. Just wanted to make sure y'all had a chance to recognize the face.
Thank you very much, Jeff, for this opportunity to introduce myself. As Jeff just said, I've been here...this is my 11th working day. So with the enormous amount of activity that you're doing in the City of Auburn, as well as the county's doing, I'm doing my best to try to educate myself and acclimate myself to what's going on here. It's a pleasure to have taken this role. I don't know how much you might know about me and how much I need to get into, but I've been doing economic development for about 37 years. I want you to know, I consider myself a native of Huguen County. I live in Fairhaven. My family has been in Fairhaven for 55 years, although most of my career has been different places and around the world doing economic development. I've always come back to Fairhaven. My heart was always in Fairhaven. I can't leave Fairhaven, no matter where it is that I go. So I'm solid behind the idea of taking what I've learned and done in my career in helping Huguen County and helping the City of Auburn. I look forward to an opportunity to come over and talk to you more about what we're all working on. I have worked with the staff here. I've introduced myself on a few of your projects, and I look forward to immersing myself and my staff and the rest of the staff there more into projects here. So, I will leave some cards, and anytime anybody wants to pick the telephone up, introduce themselves, give me some advice. I've been in politics a long time myself, so I can take constructive criticism, or whatever it is, but I just offer you that opportunity too, because I want to be an engaging chief executive. I do not want to be a chief executive that doesn't engage and get out in the community and be there, because economic development is all about sustainable growth. Sustainable growth is many things. If you don't have a sustainable community, you don't attract capital. You don't attract the jobs... You don't attract the jobs we want to. But we can talk more about that as we focus on what the project is or what our future may hold for us. So I don't want to take any more time, but it's a pleasure being here and I will see you all again. Thank you.
Before you...
Yes, sir.
Mr. Deiger, we're soon to wrap up our annual budget, so possibly after that, we have a presentation in regards to what's your thoughts?
Absolutely. I'd enjoy that. And I'd enjoy the interaction too, because you have to educate me on what it is that you've been going through, what it is you see in the future. It's a constructive conversation, because despite the economy now, there's a lot of opportunity in this economy. And I look at it that way. I don't look at, there's a lot of negative, but I look at it as an opportunity. Maybe not take a total new direction, not focus on agriculture, not manufacturing, but we have to continue to look what's gonna be out there as far as jobs, as far as our economy, 10 and 20 years down the road. And you've got great resources with Huguen County Community College and with Wells College. So I'm excited to talk about it.
Very good.
Thank you.
And lastly, last week, we mentioned, had a brief discussion here about getting together with Huguen County Social Services. So earlier this week, we had a meeting between Huguen County Social Services, the police department, planning staff, legal staff, code enforcement, to talk about some of the issues of mutual interest. The meeting went well. There was some good information shared, a few ideas shared on how to tackle some of the problems that we face. We're going to be getting together again in about two weeks, and that will also include our partners at East Hill. That's also gonna involve Huguen County Mental Health. So we're gonna continue these discussions and see where they go, about tackling some of these community issues that we have. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Counselors, any thing to report? Counselor?
So in light of the resolution earlier that recognized lake-friendly living, I just wanted to mention that Lake Friendly Living is sponsoring a series of educational events in May, and they are intended to educate the community about how they can help mitigate the effects of, you know, climate change, increased, you know, temperatures, issues with lake pollutants. And so it's available on their website. I've been to, I went to one on climate smart communities, and I'm doing another one on rainwater gardens. These are just things that businesses and communities that, or excuse me, businesses and individuals that mine own property in the watershed or just, you know, want to support, you know, mitigating climate change and helping our lake can just do things in their own lives to make positive changes. So just go to the lake-friendly, I think you get to it from our website, actually. But take a look at it. A lot of them are webinars. You can just do it on lunch hour, and I believe they're being recorded. Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else? Well. Our first presentation, Healing Communities Update. Monica Savage, Solvage, Project Director. Monica, welcome back.
Are you helping me here?
You're just exited out there and you're right on the desktop. If you minimize that window way up top, minimize it. There you go. There. Then go up to the full screen. Okay, you're on.
Better warn LJ that you're doing that shit.
I know. Never know when you need him. Good evening, Mayor, members of council, city manager. It's been a year, almost a year, I think, since I've been here, and a lot has happened since then. After this beautiful ceremony, I want to draw your attention to a little bit more somber, to a more somber topic, although I think it was very timely because it was very good to see new members journeying the force because, and I would've said that even if Chief Slaton was not here, more for your benefit, that Auburn PD is really one of our strongest partner in the healing community study, and it's really not common in all communities that law enforcement plays such a strong role when it comes to people with substance use and mental health disorders. And I want to highlight that here in the city of Auburn, that is special for us, and we do recognize that. So thank you, Chief Slaton. It started under the leadership of Chief Butler before, and it's really good to see that it continues now with you here. So thank you. So, and quite surprisingly, I'm not alone here today. I got some support from some of the people that I get to work with every day over the last two and a half years, so I just want to take a minute to introduce some people who came here to not just hear the presentation, because they do that every day, but really to show support for the work, because, you know, when you hear healing, you see me or you hear from me, but I'm merely facilitating this process on behalf of the county, and I'm coordinating this, but it's really a number of team members that I have and community partners who are actually doing that important work day to day. So we have representatives here that are on our steering committee or members of our team or members of the community who support our efforts from Chad, from Nick's Ride for Friends, our epidemiologist who's doing all our data collection and analysis. If you like data, you know, you like her. If you don't like data, then blame her for all the data slides. And I'm just really happy to see them here. We also have the Director of East Hill Medical here, who we've been working with, and yeah, and it's just a small sample of the people that work, that do that work every day. So just a quick reminder of what healing is. It stands for Helping to End Addiction Long-Term with the goal of reducing opioid overdose deaths. It's a national effort that's happening in 67 communities in four states. And the special thing about this study is really that it uses evidence-based practices, which means interventions that have proven to work with opioid use disorder. And what's also special is that the funders don't just say, okay, here's some money and here's what we want you to do with it. It's really the local steering committee, the local stakeholders, who make the decisions about the money and about the strategies. And so that community-driven approach is led by our Director of Community Services. It was started with Ray Bizari, and now Lauren Walsh has taken over the chair position of the steering committee. And then the local implementation team are basically the staff that are assigned to this effort, and we are all grant-funded, so that would be me as a project director, Wally Myers, who's our community outreach coordinator, who's really big on all our Narcan distribution efforts, Dr. Corinne Noel, she's here today, she's our epidemiologist. And if it wasn't for her and for all the partners who provide us with data, I probably wouldn't even be standing here today because I really would have not much to say. So we can talk about outcomes, we can talk about the things that really happened over the last two and a half years. And then Matt Russo, he is also a contracted consultant with us, and he's worked in different healthcare systems throughout the country, and he's really helpful with engaging partners with us when it comes to introducing change. Here's just a snapshot, and you have that in your, in your packet of really the diverse backgrounds of the people on our steering committee, really people who interface with people with opioid use disorder frequently. And as you notice, there are some representatives here from the city of Auburn, so from the Auburn Fire Department, from Auburn Police, but really most of the organizations that you see up there are situated in Auburn, although they serve all county residents. So as we know, we are facing multiple public health crises on a national level, and besides the COVID pandemic, the opiate crisis has existed before. It has been exacerbated by the pandemic, and now we're actually, since yesterday, the CDC came out with new data, we're at 107,000 people who've died from drug overdoses in a 12-month period, which is a new record, unfortunately. And we're also in a mental health crisis, brought upon by the pandemic as well, through isolation, we've seen increased substance use, increased suicide ideations, and we certainly see that trend locally as well. And now that we actually have data, we actually can quantify that for the local level. And so interestingly enough, in 2020, Huguen County lost almost as many people to overdoses as COVID-19, which is not the case in other communities. And data suggests that the interventions we started right in 2020 has actually saved lives. Unfortunately, we've also seen suicides almost triple since 2019. All overdose fatalities in the last six months were female. That's a new trend. And also, we've seen youth overdoses double from 2021 to now. And that's not illicit substances per se, that's really prescription drugs, medications from at home, all sorts of things. So this is what we walked into when we started in 2020, yeah, in 2020. So, so the goal was really, at this critical time, to save lives and to get people help. And at that point, you know, we identified a number of gaps that existed before healing started, and so one by one, we tried to address those over the last two and a half years, because literally when I started, when I was asked to lead this effort, I started with a blank slate. There was nothing. We knew that the situation was bad because we heard it from the people on the ground, but we really didn't know how bad, because there was no local data. And the data that we had was from the state, and that was two years ago, so that really doesn't tell you what the situation was right then and there. So that was our first thing that we identified as a major issue. We didn't have good countywide data, just individual data from individual agencies. Now, and I'm just gonna go through this quick, and you can take a look and ask questions if you, if you like. Now we know how many overdoses are happening, when they're happening, where they're happening, what substances are involved, how many are fatal. And this slide that you see here, this is all data that law enforcement reports whenever they're being called to an overdose. So this is also something that started with healing. We were able to get all three law enforcement agencies in the county, so APD, the Sheriff's Office, and State Police to report overdoses in a common system on a common platform, and that's why we have this information, that's why we can do so much with that data now that did not exist before. This is an overview that shows how the overdoses have evolved over time, over the last two years. The takeaway from here is after a terrible 2020, the fatal overdoses have decreased by 22% in 2021. And that goes counter to the national trend that we've just seen before, where overdoses have actually increased to 107,000. So that's at least something, you know, it's still too many overdose deaths that we don't want to see here in the county, but at least we're going in the right direction and we're countering the terrible national trend at this point. We can also tell from the data where overdoses are happening in the county, and that's a really cool plot our epidemiologist put together to really show, and however she did that, I don't even want to know with GIS data and such, to really pinpoint it by county, by town lines and by city limits, to show where overdoses are happening. So it's clearly a county problem. It's not just a city problem, as you can see from all the red triangles, from all the red squares there. But we're still at a position here in Auburn where we have a third of the county population, yet we have more than three-quarters of overdoses happening here. And those are all overdoses, not just opioids. That could be anything that has been reported, all substances.
Monica?
Yes.
Can I ask a quick question?
Mm-hmm.
In regard to that statistic, 78% of all overdoses are happening in the city of Auburn. Do we have data that says that those victims, those individuals are actually city residents that have been here a long time, lived in Auburn, or are they people from outside the county that have maybe been brought into the city for services, maybe homelessness, or from outside of Huguen County? Because we do know that there is a high number of individuals who do come in from outside of Huguen County and utilize the services here in Huguen County.
Right. So, so those plots are based on the incident location of the overdose, and again, that's reported by law enforcement. There is usually always on those overdose logs, a second address listed, which is the victim's last known address. So we do see that we have transient people who overdose, where we don't really know if they're from here or not, but they're listed as transient. And there are some where the last known address is from outside of Auburn, like say Syracuse or elsewhere. But yeah, so that would be a different way of filtering the data to see where the last known address is happening, but I see what you're, what you're getting at.
And I know it's a slippery slope. I mean, we're talking about human beings, and when we start talking about statistics and numbers, you know, you want to, I personally, and I know you do too, they're human beings, and, you know, you don't want to get callous in analyzing this data, but I do think it's important to know, because how do we address the issue, right, here in the city of Auburn if we don't know, is it, you know, the education system? Is it poverty in the city of Auburn? Or is it people that are coming in from outside the city?
Right.
And where would we direct the resources so that they're most effective?
Mm-hmm. And I would also say, even if people are from outside of Auburn and they happen to overdose in the city of Auburn, it's still Auburn Police who has to respond, it's firefighters, the ambulance, it's the hospital. So even though they're not from here, it's still local resources that are being directed towards that. But that's something we could look into, you know, based on, based on the data that we get to, to filter on the, on the last known address and see if there is a significant difference when we look at it that way.
Thank you.
Monica, at the same time, we have two state correctional facilities within the county. Is that broken out separately or how, and I'm not taking issue with it, I'm just wondering how they are categorized? For example, if it's, is it the correctional facility on State Street? Is that listed as Auburn or is it based on the police department's records as to what it may be?
Yeah, I mean, it's based on the address that is listed on, on the overdose log. So I don't know, Chief Slaton, if you want to, if something happens at the police or at the correctional facility, I don't think it's listed any different.
Mayor, the New York State Police responds to the Auburn Correction. So it falls under their umbrella.
All right, that's fine. I just wondered if the numbers would be...
Okay.
That's fine. Thank you.
But also, we also get the data from the state police, so that's all included here as well. Yes. So this plot here is, is a very cool map, and it shows the hotspots that are, that are especially hard-hit in the city of Auburn regarding overdoses. And again, that's all overdoses, and the darker the red, the more prevalent overdoses were in those neighborhoods. And this is not just nice to look at to, you know, where things are happening and how they're changing over time, but we use this data or those maps to actually direct our outreach activities. When we do Narcan trainings, when we send out material, or when we go out in neighborhoods, this is the data that we use to target our efforts, because we do have limited resources and we can't be everywhere at the same time, but this is really helpful. And I have this data also by quadrants of the city, if you're interested. We also know, and we work closely with the coroner's office on this, we also know when somebody passes away from an overdose, what substances they had in them. And so what you can see here from that plot is that poly substance use is really a big issue, because it's almost, almost all overdoses, you know, fatal overdoses show that there's more than one substance involved. Most of them, 95%, have fentanyl involved, but that just goes to show, it's not enough... because it's almost all overdoses, you know, fatal overdoses show that there's more than one substance involved. Most of them, 95%, have fentanyl involved. But that just goes to show, it's not enough to address just one issue, one substance, but that we really need a more comprehensive substance use approach. So, to that end, when the shutdown happened, we knew that people didn't have access to life-saving medication. And so, one of our first big initiatives was to ramp up Narcan distribution, to keep people alive long enough to get them the help that they need. So Naloxone, or the brand name Narcan, is a nasal spray that reverses the effects of an overdose, and that could be heroin, or fentanyl, or prescription painkillers, including opioids in them. It does not induce a high. It can't be diverted or misused, and it can't be really administered by anyone with a short training. It is recognized as a standard of care in community settings, meaning, when I talk about a medical setting, we're talking about people like you and I are totally qualified to utilize Narcan and administer it. Narcan is provided to us at no cost by the New York State Department of Health. And we're using healing funding for shipping Narcan, and also for events that we hold in-person trainings for, and then the staff who is administering this program. And here are some numbers of where we've gone with our Narcan distribution effort. Here you see my team member, Wally, putting up a Narcan box somewhere. We've went from giving out, prior to the healing effort, 136 kits a year. Now, we're over 1,000 per year. And so, we've really ramped up this program by giving people the opportunity to request Narcan online, and we would mail it to them. We do in-person trainings in hard-hit neighborhoods, and we've done so throughout the pandemic. The jail is also offering voluntary Narcan training for their inmates. And most recently, last year, we started putting up those red boxes. That is really another way of providing public access to people without having to ask any questions. They have a Narcan kit in it, and people can just take it. And we have those, over 100 of them, installed in different organizations and public buildings in the county. We have it at the county office building on every floor, on the mental health building, in all the bathrooms. And so, the hope is, we also want to work with the city and making sure that city-owned buildings are outfitted with that, just like you have defibrillators, and also get city staff trained, just like they get trained on first aid, if they want to. And then also, we've been working with the Auburn Fire Department. They now leave Narcan behind at the scene of an overdose when there were opioids involved or suspected to be involved. And that started this year. So we're very happy to be able to do that as well. Here are some upcoming events that we have with our Narcan training. We have a big event countywide on June 4th. It's happening in six locations, four locations in Auburn, and then two outside of Auburn. And this is really the way to get out into the community, and not just distribute Narcan, but also talk about the resources that we have available for people who are looking to seek help. And so, here we are at the high school, talking to high school kids. And then, too, we've trained a number of students at BOSI's. They were very receptive to that, also teachers there. And so, now we're looking at summer events, now that they are happening again. And we want to have a presence there to raise awareness of the issue, and also train people and give them the tools to take action in an opioid overdose situation. We've also outfitted our Narcan boxes with QR codes now. That makes it really easy in case you find an empty box. You just hold your phone over it, and it takes you right to our website, where you can request a free Narcan kit, and we mail it to you. And we also enlist our youth in helping with the effort. We had a big initiative where we distributed almost 500 bags of Narcan and community resources to all our housing developments in Auburn with a partnership through the Auburn Housing Authority and Oak Creek Townhouses. And so, the kids helped bag hundreds of those bags and supported this effort. So the big question is, does it work? And does Narcan get into the right hands? Or are we just flooding the community and, you know, nothing really changes? And again, data shows that it gets into the right hands, because we know now, again, from data that's reported, that prior to our efforts, when there was an overdose and there were overdose witnesses, people did not have Narcan at hand, and you really had to rely on first responders to save the person's life. Now, we have as many witnesses administering Narcan as first responders. And that has added up to about 76 lives that were potentially saved by overdose witnesses. And that goes back to the non-medical setting, where people can take action and save somebody's life, and then call 911 and get the medical support. Another gap we saw was, you know, now that we know where the overdoses are happening, how do we reach those high-risk individuals? And so, we really put a focus on figuring out, you know, how can we get to those people after they have overdosed, when they just experienced this drama, trauma, and are at high risk for overdosing again? So, for a while, a healing team member who's also a recovery peer advocate, he started that outreach program for us, and really went to people after they have overdosed and tried to link them to service, or get them to talk to him and get them connected. And that was really effective, because you wouldn't believe if you knock on somebody's door and start talking to them, they cannot believe that somebody actually cares enough to show up and see how they're doing after an overdose. So, most recently, we have transitioned this function over to NICS Ride, our peer organization. Healing provided funding for an additional peer for that purpose, to really make sure that there is outreach happening after an overdose, and then the linkage to services. And that is working really well. And again, for those of you who, you know, were not aware, peers are people in recovery who are now helping other people to get into recovery. They're specifically trained, and they have a different way of operating, because they know what the people are going through. They're different than a counselor, they're different than a therapist. They can really talk to people on their level and connect with them that other people can. So we're really happy and also fortunate to have this organization here in the county, because again, not every county has such an organization. And we also put healing funding towards the expansion of Mobile Crisis to include substance use calls in addition to mental health calls. And also that the public is able to call that number directly. Previously, it was only for law enforcement agencies and other agencies who could call the Mobile Crisis Team. Here are some advertisements that we sent out. You probably got that in the mail in May. And this is sort of information to let people know, you know, there is a local crisis line that you can call. We've also started an overdose task force with people from APD, AFD, NICS Ride, the Sheriff's Office, and the hospital to talk about and figure out how we can help people at high risk for overdoses, specifically people who have overdosed multiple times. And one of the stats, for instance, is in 2021, year-to-date, there have been 32 individuals who overdosed in Auburn two or more times, who are still alive. And so, we made a point of reaching out to all of them. And, you know, some of them we reached, some of them we didn't, others were incarcerated. But a number of them, we were able to connect and link to services. And so, now that we kept people alive long enough so we can actually help them get access to treatment, we also noticed that there is an issue with the accessibility of those services, especially the timely access, and especially when it comes to medications for opioid use disorder, and also the referral system to it. And medications are another way to help people reduce withdrawal symptoms and their cravings, and it helps lower the risk of relapse and having another overdose or even death. So, we do have providers here in the community that provide that service. However, there is a very small window of opportunity when people are, A, ready for that service, and then also that it's appropriate for them. And so, we found that even with our local providers and with all the scheduling that they have going on, it was just not possible to get into treatment when people needed it. There's a waitlist, there's time, you know, that goes by. And this is only time that makes it harder for people to access treatment. And if it's easier to get access to illicit drugs than to get into treatment, then we know what happens. So, again, we provided healing funds for a prescriber that we contracted with, who was on call for us to provide those medication services when needed that same day. And then, again, our peer organization was very crucial. We developed a process with them, how that linkage happens to them, so that the individuals are not on their own. And then afterwards, the peers would help them get connected to local providers for ongoing care, which is really important, because we just don't want them to have, like, one script and then be off and gone. But we want them to be connected for ongoing care. And then the peers would also take them to the pharmacy to get their first script. So it's a very smooth process that they've developed. And again, I don't know that this happens in too many other communities that way. This is actually a picture of the provider, and then a picture of the pharmacist, who provides really compassionate care to all patients, but also especially patients with opioid use disorder. And again, you don't see that in all pharmacies. So, so far, the 89 is not current anymore. So by now, we're up to 115 individuals that this prescriber initiated on medication treatment that same day.
Monica, when MOUDs are used, is there follow-up with that provider? Or, because I'm assuming oftentimes, somebody may not have a primary care provider available to them, maybe not have health insurance available to them. So when that course of treatment is prescribed by this provider, what's the follow-up process for that?
Right. So that's why it's so important that the people are linked with a peer, because the peers can help them then set up an appointment with a local provider for ongoing care. This guy is just here to start the treatment the same day when people need it. And then, we have providers, you know, then it takes, you know, he writes a script, and then, you know, in a week or two or something, you know, we can usually get somebody in with a local provider, and that will be then the ongoing care provider. And again, and the peers would do follow-up with them. They would make sure that they stay engaged. And it's a really great, it's a really great way of staying in contact with people and knowing what happens to them.
Trying to think, I want to ask this question. Is there, are there side effects or a danger of an individual taking this course of treatment?
With the MOUD, you're saying? Well, it is an FDA-approved medication. There are actually three of them. There is special training for the providers, who, they actually have to be waivered to prescribe that. And if it's taken as prescribed, it's meant to be safe. I mean, there's always diversion, like with anything, you can divert, you know, Tylenol or whatever it is. So there's always that potential for that. But again, the danger of possibly diverting should not preclude people from being able to access that treatment.
Thank you.
So, and then when you think about, wow, why do we actually need same-day treatment? Why is it not enough to get in somewhere in a week or two? Then the question is really, you know, what if it's your child, or your brother, or your spouse? How many phone calls should it take to get care? And how quickly should that care be available? And now that we know that there is a need in the county for same-day inductions, and we have the data to show it, and we have the cases to show it, do we really want to go back to not having that service? Because that contract is running out, the healing funding is running out for that particular service. And so, we're trying to figure out how we can keep this service, keep it going on in the county after this prescriber is done with his contract. And so, all that goes back to stigma. We have stigma, you know, in the community. We have stigma in the healthcare profession. It's just a thing that we're trying to address on all sorts of different levels, to really talk about addiction, and not just opioids, any addiction, as a medical condition that you can treat and that people deserve to be treated for, and that it's not a privilege, because it's not a privilege for somebody who has heart disease or any other chronic disease, and that people don't need to be punished first before they get treatment. And so, we have a number of communications campaigns and materials where we talk about, you know, what it really is, and trying to reduce that stigma. We're also working with local people in recovery through our communications campaign to have them tell their stories, to show that not everybody gets to that point in the same way, and not everybody recovers the same way, and our healthcare system has to respond accordingly. It can't be that we just have one way of, okay, we want you to recover in that way, and if that doesn't work for you, well, that's too bad. So we really need to make sure that we have multiple ways of how people have a chance to recover. And here, and that's like really small, but it's probably better to see on your handout, this outlines how we have spent our healing funds over the last two and a half years, and the impact that it has had in the community. And so, as of February, almost $800,000 went into community initiatives to local vendors, to local providers. And as you look at it, it's all with different colors, but the length of the color bar also indicates how long that funding was meant to last. So some things were meant to be just a one-time funding, others, you know, others last for longer. But it just gives you an idea of the different organizations that received funding, and also the purpose that it was for. So as we're looking at, you know, that funding that we were giving out for interventions, that is not going to be renewed in that last year of the grant that we have now, so that funding is done with. And we have some limited funding available for staffing until the grant runs out in March of 2023. So we're closing out that grant. So we did receive additional funding from the funders, because we were doing really well with implementation. So the county got an additional $300,000 in grant funds. And we also got extended our staffing funds until the end of the study, which was not planned for. So that was really great, but at that point, so we're talking about now, you know, how do we want to sustain this? Because, another thing, the last thing that was identified was that we do not have a countywide coordination of those services. And now, through the healing framework, we do. And so, the question is, you know, do we want to use that framework to continue on? Do we want to expand it to other substances beyond just opioids? Because we've seen opioids are not our only problem. And how do we make sure, you know, that we keep our agencies together? Because it's really not the agency's job, because they have a mission to follow. They have their own mission, and it's not the agency's job. It's really the county's job to figure out a county-wide vision, and then bring the agencies together and feed them the data that we have and all the information, so it can inform their processes. And so, that's where we are right now. I'm not going to go through all that. Just this one thing, again, to highlight the point. When we're talking about in 2021, we had one-third of overdoses were opioid-related. That leaves two-thirds of overdoses that included all sorts of other substances. And I believe that we have to address those as well, not just the opioids. And now that this funding is over, which gave us the framework, I think we have an opportunity as a community to provide funding for something that we think is important. And that is more than just opioids. It includes all sorts of other substances and mental health disorders, and really help people as a whole, and not just piecemeal it. So, that's it. Thank you for hanging in there with me. I know it's a lot.
Counselors, any questions?
I have one more question, if you don't mind, I have one more question.
Sure.
You mentioned the increase in female overdoses. And in the last six months, all fatal overdoses were females. Do you have any corroborating data as to why there's this increase in overdoses with females?
So when you look at national data... So, so when you look at, at national data that the CDC has brought out over the last two and a half years regarding the pandemic, it has shown increased substance use in general, but specifically for females. It has shown increased alcohol use, excessive alcohol use predominantly in females. So the thought process is that especially during the pandemic, there's been a lot more stressors put on women with kids, you know, being, you know, going to school from at home, they may have to work from at home, or maybe they can't work from at home and they had to go to work. And a lot of the, those pressures still fall on women overall. And, and I think females, because they are usually in charge of the children, are maybe not as prevalent to actually ask for help, because then they may be afraid, well, what if somebody knows what's going on, that I'm drinking too much or doing drugs, you know, then the kids get, getting taken away from me. So I think there are a number of issues that play into it, but we see it with suicides, we see it with completed, with fatal overdoses. And that's really concerning because that's, that's over the last, it's not the whole pandemic, but it has been, especially over the last year. And so again, so now that we have this data, if we don't know, we just don't know, right? But now that we have this data, now we're thinking about, you know, how can we address this? And so we're talking, you know, to NICS Right and it's like, well, you know, we have one female peer in the county and she's here right now and she works part-time. So do we need more female peers to do specific outreach and target specifically women at risk, women who are pregnant and afraid to lose their kids because they are using drugs and they don't know how to deal with it? So, so those are all things now that we have the data that we can react to it and really make decisions based on that. We never had that data.
Good, thank you.
Counselor Kemp, please.
This is, this was a remarkable presentation and the data is really well, well done. I have a question about, so you took us through this whole thing and then at the end, the sort of takeaway messages, now what? Like, what if, what happens if there's no funding and nothing, and it doesn't stay? So I'm, my question is, do you have, so you're one of 67 communities that are going through this, so do you have an ongoing relationship with any of the other communities? Are you learning how they're helping promote or negotiate or find ways to continue the work in their communities that maybe would help Cuyahoga County? So that's part of...
Yeah. So, so, and I want to mention, when, when we did the strategies and provided those, those funding opportunities for agencies, it was always meant to be seed money, because we always knew this money was going away. So whenever we funded a strategy, we wanted to make sure that we had a sustainability plan. And so I'm happy to say that with most agencies, that the strategies that they started implementing are able to be sustained for the most part. What we didn't have before, and again, where the funding is lacking is really that overall coordination. And that's often overlooked because, you know, they're like, well, the agencies are doing their work. Yes, they are, but it shouldn't be all on them to figure everything out. There should be a coordination where information is fed to them, where collaboration can, is facilitated and where there's really a vision that all the agencies can work towards and not everybody on, on their own. And so other, other communities, they, they have used ARPA funds to, to continue staffing for a certain amount of time. They've used opioid settlement funds. We're also, we're also applying for grants. So there are certain grants that only providers can apply for, but then there are certain grants that as an LGU, as a government unit, you can apply for as well. So, so we've done that. And, yeah, and so we're having this conversation now. I mean, it's still early and thankfully, I mean, before I would have lost half of my team in September. Now, you know, I get to keep them until March, which is really great, so we can make a plan for after. And, yeah, and we're having those, those discussions now where the...
Thank, thank you.
Appreciate it.
All set, Counselor?
Thank you.
Thank you. Very, very interesting, very informative. Nice presentation. Thank you. Monica, would you like to come back and introduce all your friends you have with you? I'm sure they're all involved with your...
Sure.
Please. I shouldn't say your staff, but your coworkers, it'd sound better.
No, they're, they're all partners, they're all partners. So April Miles from East Hill, we started working with East Hill when Keith Cutler was still there. And we're working with one of her providers right now, East Hill Medical. Brian Bush, you saw him on, on some of the material up there. He is a certified recovery peer advocate with Chad. He also works at the jail and with the Unity House. And then Ashley Short, she's the new executive director for NICS Right for Friends, our peer organization. She was previously with the Unity House, Grace House, the supportive living unit, who is also, which is also a partner of the Healing Community Study. And then we have Drew, he is one of the peers at NICS Right. And Mary, she's with NICS Right as well, our only female peer. And, and then we have Corinna here, she's our epidemiologist, who came all the way from Ithaca. And then we have Tim Donovan, he's a community advocate and he also works with us on our communications campaigns. He helps distribute material for us and as we all know, he's a great advocate for substance use disorder. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Counselors, we have Mr. Garland coming up next. Would you like to take a short break or you want to keep plugging along?
I'm fine.
Keep going. Mr. Garland, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sure I've told this body before, never believe a lawyer when he says I'm going to keep it short and sweet, but in this case, we have Ryan McCarthy, an attorney out of Syracuse, presenting the appeal. I'll be here to answer any questions that the counsel may have, but it's counsel's motion and I'll, I'll let him take it from here. Good evening, my name is, oh, I'm sorry.
We have a few people exiting just before you...
Oh, sure, I'll hold off.
Please, go ahead. All set, thank you.
Good evening, Counsel. Thanks for the opportunity. My name is Ryan McCarthy, I represent Erika Iantono. And we filed this application for an appeal of an HRB determination at the March 8 hearing, which effectively revoked and denied a certificate of appropriateness, which was previously approved on this property. I, I set out in our letter with the exhibits there, the basis for it. The main argument that I think we're proposing is that the reasons for the denial are not actually permitted under the village, or the city code for the historic review board. Specifically, they denied it because of the height restriction and there was no real enunciation that the property didn't, or the proposed shed rather, didn't substantially adversely affect the property or the value, or the neighborhood or the surrounding properties. The only evidence really in support of the board's position that this, this proposed shed wasn't appropriate was, was a letter from an architect, which was disclosed to my clients a couple of days beforehand. But it never went so far as to say that the, the shed was too high or not compliant with the code. And it didn't say that it had a substantially adverse impact on the neighborhood. It probably had some critiques with whatever the final design of the shed was, which may or may not be valid from an architectural standpoint, but it doesn't rise to the level that lets the historical review board deny my clients the right to build the property that they want to on their property. And, and, you know, kind of looking at it from a step back, there, there's a house and there's a garage and this proposed shed. And my clients are building it, the new shed, to make it all match. So all three buildings kind of work together and they all are of the same style. The architect seems to think that it's more appropriate in historic community to have like a generic, modern-type shed as opposed to one that matches the rest of the property, which I, I think, I don't know exactly what arbitrary and capricious is, but I feel like I don't know what it would be if it isn't, because this is clearly a flow and a design of the property that my clients designed intentionally that the historic review board, for whatever reason, doesn't like, revoked the certificate of appropriateness and then issued the stop work order. The, the other layer to this is that they had gone through all the hoops, they made a variance application and they were told it was okay to build and then the rug got pulled out from under them in January while it's under construction. I believe in part of my materials, the partially constructed shed is on the property, just sitting there incomplete because of the stop, a stop work order that was issued by the codes officer. From our understanding, at the direction of the HRB, because their allegation is, is that the under-construction shed didn't match the proposal in the initial application, which has some merit to it, but this is what they were told to do by the planning office and the HRB. They, they followed the directions that they were told to at the time and no one seemed to question the aesthetic quality or height of the shed at the time and now they brought it up after it was almost halfway built. This is an extreme hardship on my clients, who now are faced with the options of tearing everything down, losing all of the time, energy and money they sunk into this and not having the shed, which was otherwise approved by all the other agencies in the city. So for these reasons, we're asking that the city council reverse the determination at the March 8 hearing of the HRB and reinstitute the original certificate of appropriateness and revoke the stop work order, let my clients finish the shed to complete the project.
Mr. Garland, hey, this is all moot, I think every one of us, so we're trying to do what's right and be, be...
Certainly.
Well, Mayor, I think, I think I can sum up the position of the Historic Resources Review Board fairly succinctly in that the CVA, the certificate of appropriateness that was issued was for a particular shed, thing that, something that looked like a shed in the common conception of what a shed is. And the dimensions that were granted by the HRB were 10 by 14. The current shed that was built and then is the basis of this denial is, is not the, example of a shed that was provided in the original application and it is of 10 by 18 dimensions. So it's, it's, it's a different thing that was granted a certificate of appropriateness. So I, I think that that's what the HRB will hang their hat on, based of course on their criteria, which is the, the rules and regulations promulgated by the United States Secretary of the Interior. So that, that I think is their legal position, that the, the authority that they have to grant a certificate of appropriateness comes with it, comes with the ability to have that certificate of appropriateness revoked and to have the code enforcement office put a stop work order on things that are being built in the city that do not adhere to the certificate of appropriateness. And the, frankly, just the dimensionality of the, the dimensions of the, pardon me, I don't think dimensionality is a word. The dimensions of the, of the shed in and of itself are part of the aesthetic criteria that the HRB can use. So that's, generally, I think that's the board's position.
I guess, if the counsel doesn't mind, to be heard on that last point, I, I think there's, there's an important decision for the counsel to make about what the extent of the authority the HRB is, because, you know, it's true that the footprint is bigger, but they also went to a ZBA appeal and got an area variance for that, for that type of shed. So the dimensionality, no, I'm just joking, the, the dimensions of the shed are within the, either the ZBA or the planning boards' purview, not the historic review board. The residents should not have to go through multiple layers approving the same project on the same criteria with the hopes that they all have the same aesthetic, you know, agreement on these things. They've had to do this multiple times and now the historic review board is trying to say, well, this is somehow aesthetically unsuitable for the neighborhood because of an extra 40 square feet. There's nothing in the record that reflects that. Even the architect doesn't even really insist that this extra square footage is the problem. And also, the code explicitly forbids the HRB from making height restrictions. They're not allowed to go underneath what the normal height restrictions are in the code and this property, or this property in the zoning code on it is 20 feet. If it's under 20 feet, it's allowed. And basically, I, I think from the, from the transcripts of the hearings, the, the board is saying, it's too high, it's too tall, we're disapproving it because of the height, which they're explicitly not allowed to do in the code. So, you know, the, the city council's role here is to try to define the limits of what the HRB can and can't do, and those limits are written down in the code. So, you know, we're asking you to reject and reverse the, or reverse the ruling because they've exceeded their authority on those grounds.
Counselor, John Tino, I think you were for, Counselor Kemp, I'm sorry.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Just to help me clarify, would, when did your client, who, what organ is, what part of the city did your client first approach? The Historic Resources Review Board or Codes? Where did your client first go?
They went to Codes first. And they were, and again, this is a, they've been kind of ping-ponging back and forth between the offices all along. And again, they jumped through all the hoops. They were, they were told to get an area variance after the HRB looked at it. They went to the ZBA, they got the area variance, they filed their permit, they got the permit, and then after it was almost completed, they shut it down. So, you know, they've gone to everybody, no one ever asked and no one ever, you know, tried to make this height where sometimes, dimensions objection to this shed until after it was already built.
Keep, are you all set, Counselor? Keep going if you'd like.
I, I just wanted to also ask Corporation Counsel, the, the appeal basically has come to us as a, to reverse the determination. What are the options? What is the city council? Because this very rarely happens. This is, we are put into the, the position of being a judge and this very rarely happens. I'll be honest with you, I am not an expert in historic, you know, historic preservation. You know, obviously, there's a lot of, as you said, facets of the city that your client is working with. What is, what is our role? Am I right that we're a judge? And what are options that we have to kind of, because I want this to come to some resolution, but, but I, you know, I'm not sure, are like, are we the end or is there other things that can happen? I just want to know what our options are.
Certainly. There are three options, Counselor. There is the option of granting the relief requested and reversing the HRB's decision and allowing the appellant to finish the, the shed that they've built. The, another option is to deny the appeal and then the decision of the HRB would stand. The shed would have to come down. A third option is to remand this case to the HRB with certain instructions so that that case could be heard in front of that board again. Now, a denial from this body would represent an exhaustion of administrative remedies. At that point, the appellant would have access to the Cuyahoga County Supreme Court via an Article 78 action to challenge an administrative ruling. So it's hard to answer, are you the end?
Well, all right. So I guess we are a stop at some, there's, they're looking for some resolution, obviously reversal of the determination...
That's what we're asking.
...of, of the departmental... Of, of the departmental, what has happened within your, working through the various departments in the city and commissions. If we remand this, it goes back to the Historic Resources Review Board in the hopes that there can be some remedy between those parties, that they, you know, that there can be some compromise if we give instruction that there needs to be some, some resolution to this. If that doesn't work, then does that go to the Supreme Court after that too? Is that another way that that can go to the Supreme Court?
I think implicit in your question, Counselor, is are you going to have to hear this again if that happens? And the answer to that would be no, that would be the exhaustion of the remedy that, of their administrative process at that point, then they could go to the, to have to take that application to the Supreme Court. I will say that it's, at least my opinion, that the H R B did, and the planning office did attempt to come to some negotiated agreement, shall we say, with the appellant's. O P E D Director Haynes is the staff member that's currently staffing that board and she did go out of house and get an expert to come in to determine the historical appropriateness of a shed like that. At that point, as Counselor said, the applicants were presented, or the appellant's were presented with a report that that architect put together and then the H R B and the applicant engaged in discussions about taking the height of the building down and what, and to see if a compromise could take place. Now, would that discussion be the same if, if this body remanded this current case back to the H R B? I don't know. It's, in my mind, it is certainly an available and remedy and some, some good could come out of that, I think.
I'm done for now. Just, I might, I might ask some more questions in a bit.
Counselor Genatino, you are next.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Garland, in the information that's provided in our packet, there are pictures, I'm assuming, and I'm asking for clarification, of a manufactured shed. At that time, is that what was proposed to the H R B, is what was going to be built?
Yes, the H R B and its Certificate of Appropriateness granted the permission to have a temporary shed erected and then the Certificate of Appropriateness was also granted for a permanent shed to be 10 by 14. And the picture that was with the application was the example that the applicant chose to put forth as a shed.
When the applicant went to zoning, I'm not seeing it in here, were there any additional pictures provided of what the structure would look like?
The zone, the Z B A is, they're, they are not charged with having, part of what they do is, it doesn't include looking at aesthetics. I can't recall if a particular shed was proposed to the Z B A. If, if there was, I apologize. I will, I will direct the council's attention to the Z B A minutes where the Chair of the Z B A notes that the Z B A application asks for a 10 by 18 shed and gives the applicant an opportunity to pull its application, to pull their application, to get approval from the H R B for a 10 by 18 shed. So the Chair of the Z B A and then the Z B A as a body note that there is a difference between the Certificate of Appropriateness that was granted and the variance that is being sought.
Thank you.
All set, Counselor?
All set.
Counselor Castro, please.
I don't want to sound like a broken record, but just to start over again, they started out with a 10 by 14 approved by codes.
Approved by the, the H R B, yes.
Was there a height on that?
No height.
So when you file for a permit for a shed, it can be 10 by 14, 50 foot high? There's no heights?
Don't tell Brian Hicks. No, I, I don't know, Counselor, what, what that height limitation is off the top of my head.
It's 20 feet, it's 20.
Okay, so you gotta, they gotta.
Do you know that for a fact or?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Counselor, go ahead, please.
So they got approved for a 10 by 14 in writing?
Yes.
So the next step, why did they go bigger than a 10 by 14 that they got approved for? And did you get approved to build the shed that you have now in writing?
Yeah, and maybe my client can elaborate on exactly what happened, but there were a lot of discussions between the planning office, codes, and the Z B A during that interim. There was actually a long, like, almost a year passed because of COVID and basically the design that they settled on after they went, before they went to the Z B A, rather, was this 10 by 18 style that they had.
What I'm looking for is, not to interrupt you, I'm looking for in writing approval of what's on the property. So if you had approval for a 10 by 14, fine. If you had approval for a 10 by 20, approved, fine. That's what I'm looking for.
Right, so the, the codes, the building permit and the Z B A both approved for the 10 by 18.
In writing?
Yes. That's in the Exhibit C is the Z B A approving the 10 by 18 and then I think Exhibit B is the building permit.
Right.
D. So those were both approved, you know, with the understanding that that was different by that extra four feet and width from the original application that was done in like August 2020, September 2020 to the H R B. So, but, yeah, 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 if you want to explain what happened between codes.
Let me, let me just ask one other question, because I'll forget if I don't. Why did we, why do they even go to codes to get a 10 by 14 if they can jump over codes and get a 10 by 18?
Well, that's, that's a, that's a good question, Counselor. I, you know, the, I guess I would say that the, it's my personal opinion that the applicants were, the appellant's were acting in good faith throughout this whole process and it can be confusing. But the, perhaps what got lost in the mix was the, the understanding that the Historic Resources Review Board has authority over certain things. The Z B A has authority over certain things and the planning board has authority over certain things. And frankly, to build a 10 by 18 shed in the historic district, you need approval from the Z B A, you need, and you need approval from the H R B to do the thing that you want to build.
I guess our position on that is that codes in the Z B A and the planning board are the ones who would have any jurisdiction over figuring out what the footprint of the thing is. The H R B is really just limited to what the aesthetic quality is going to be after it's built. And the denial is based on things other than the aesthetic quality. So our argument here is that the H R B is overstepping its bounds into the codes or planning board or Z B A jurisdiction by making a height, footprint, whatever determination to deny this, this building permit. That's kind of our position.
I mean, can I ask?
Counselor, hang on.
Oh, sorry. I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, yeah.
I'm going to ask if Ms. Haynes can go to the microphone. And I believe this is referring to the architect that was coming in to, to assess the structure. What was their determination and how was that presented to the Historic Resources Review Board?
So we reached out to Crawford and Sterns, which is a well-known preservation architect for some guidance. We at that point had been two meetings in discussing this application. The Historic Resources Review Board had, in previous meetings, asked me if there was a possibility to use consultant assistance for difficult applications. And I thought this would be a good one to start with because we were struggling with it. So because we did want to come to a compromise with the applicants, I suggested that at the February meeting. And the board and the, and the applicant at the time agreed to do that. So we reached out, we got a letter. As Mr. McCarthy stated, there were several items in the letter that discussed historic preservation in general. Again, I'm not a historic preservation expert, but, but one of the things that somebody trained in that area would say is that the contributing structures on the property are the house and the carriage house. And anything else that you build on that property should not compete with those structures.
And that is an aesthetic determination?
Yep. And so that, and so that is, I believe, some of the reason why the board is asking for the height to be lowered so that that structure does not compete with the house and the carriage house. I agree with Mr. Garland that this applicant has all the right intentions. They have done a lot of work in designing it to match the other structures. Again, a historic preservation expert may say that that actually competes with the structures. Again, I'm not an expert in that, but that was some of the crux of the letter from Crawford and Sterns. Again, Mr. McCarthy is correct, he did not talk about height restriction, but that is the reason that the board is talking about height so that it does not compete with the two contributing structures on the property. So that was kind of the gist of the letter from, from Crawford and Sterns.
Thank you.
Counselor, do you have, Counselor, can, do you have any? I'm not going to put you on the spot.
No, I just, so the H R B is its own entity, correct? And they abide by rules and regulations that are set, how?
The Secretary, the United States Secretary of the Interior at some point promulgated standards by which historic districts could determine what is historic. I mean, it's a fairly subjective thing to do. And the United States Secretary of the Interior provided some, some guidance with that. So those are essentially, those are the rules and regs that the H R B uses. There's really nothing in our historic preservation code that says this is what you should consider historic. And I don't think there's anything in, in any of the laws in New York State that, that hits that either. But there, you know, it's my opinion that the people, the members on that board have been on that board for quite some time and it's, it is, it's staffed by some pretty knowledgeable people in that regard.
So there's no clear cut identifiable page and number that says this is how this will be resolved? It's subject to some interpretation?
That's, that's my understanding. Now, I'm, and by no means an expert here. I'm turning him his hands and getting a, getting a nod from her, she has much more expertise in this area than I do. But that's generally speaking, it is, as I said, somewhat of a subjective pursuit to figure out what is historic. But as, as Ms. Haynes said, the, and I think this is a good example of that, is that the fact that the new structure shouldn't take the shine off of the historic structures is, that's part of the standards that the Secretary of the Interior promulgates.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Kent. So the, there is a section of the city code that, that does kind of state what the criteria is. It's not much more specific than what Nate said, but it's, it's Section 178-11A of the city code. And it only lets the Historical Review Board deny these certificates of appropriateness when, and I'll quote it here, let's see here, "New construction or resource or landscape feature substantially alters the historic landmark or resource or neighborhood." So it's not just that the Historical Review Board can say, I like this, I don't like this. It has to be, this is not at all what the community is all about. It, it needs to be something substantially affecting it, not just, I don't like it. And I think that's all we got from the, again, the architect's letter, I'm sure, is perfectly accurate and fine, it just doesn't reach to the level where they can deny it on those grounds. And then I did want to comment on Counselor Luc Castro's point about the 10 by 14. So the, this is part of the instruction from a former employee of the city, Holly. The, the code only lets this type of shed be 140 square feet. So when my client submitted the original application to the H R B, they couldn't submit a non-compliant structure with 180 square feet because that would be explicitly prohibited by the code. But the language in the Certificate of Appropriateness that said they could go to the Z B A for an area variance, which would be to expand the footprint, was how they expanded it from the 10 by 14 to 10 by 18. And that's, that's what they were instructed to do in it, not that they were, again, and no one's saying that they tried to pull the wool over anyone's eyes, they did what they were supposed to do. I think I can understand how the H R B did, can understand the picture submitted in the original application was different from what was built, but my clients were doing what they thought they needed to do on the, on the issue. Pulling out the rug at this point is extremely unfair, is our point.
Counselor Cuddy.
First of all, thank you, Mr. McCarthy, for being here. This has happened only once on my time on council and obviously it's our job to, to hear both the appeal and from city staff and the various departments and commissions that represent us. I am, you know, my, at least I'll say this for my, my interest, my interest is to remand this back to the Historic Resources Review Board. This is not my expertise. I do believe that there will be some resolution, you know, somewhere between the Historic Resources Review Board, your client, the, your client's, the, you know, the architect that, again, was a, you know, what's, what's, what's happening here is I think what would benefit is, is, you know, another, another shot to try to come to some resolution. They've spent more time with this issue than, than we have. You know, that's my, my thought is to, is to remand. I don't know if my colleagues agree or not, but that's, I offer that as a option.
I'll weigh in, weigh in your thoughts together. This is, this is one of the situations where you can't win. You know, we have to, if we go one way, we have this group upset with us. We go another way, this group, including the homeowners, who are, who are stuck in the middle trying to do what, I believe they're trying to do what is right. Anyone's been to my house, you know, I built a closet once because I had a two by four that was 36 inches long and that was a great place to start and we went up from there. And I'm still reminded about that by my friends and my wife. I agree with Counselor Cuddy. I, I feel the position we should take is, two things, refer back to Historical Resources Review Board, but we have, we should be looking at our code and, and other things in this line as to what other conflicts are happening in our, in our city between two different boards. And one has jurisdiction here, one has jurisdiction there. And in this case, it jumbled together, came together. And in this case, it jumbled together, came together, and now we have to decide which is the right way to go. So it's not easy. I don't want to insult the homeowners, I don't want to insult our boards, but maybe this should have been addressed earlier by someone. I don't know who, codes, whatever the case may be, but I tend to lean with Counselor Cuddy. Counselor?
The only problem I got is, these part people over here got a shed that's half-built, which if it gets shot back, we could be here next year at this time with the same issue. I mean, somewhere's along the line, it's got to get resolved. We can't keep kicking the can down the street. And as far as the size, the height, and everything else, is there an issue now that there's a shed that's half-built in a historic society or historic area? It's got to get resolved. I mean, if it can get resolved fast and shot back, I'm for it. If it's going to be a long process, then I think we got to step up to the plate.
So I just checked with Ms. Haynes, Counselor. If the council decides to remand and applicant still desires, the matter would be heard on June 14th in the next HRRB meeting.
And just for clarification, if it's not resolved there, it does not come back here, goes to the court system?
That's correct.
If I just, if the decision is to remand, and you know, the vote hasn't happened yet, but I think there needs, and under the code, there needs to be some instructions for how it is remanded. Like, in other words, like, if you're not outright rejecting it, you know, their decision needs to at least state why these things substantially adversely affecting the neighborhood or something along those lines. Or, you know, somehow instructed to say you can't consider the height or, you know, outside of your jurisdiction. And, you know, I, you're right, I think if this is the exhaustion of our remedies, I don't think I'll be here arguing about it. But I think when the HRRB is involved in this aesthetic thing, you're not really going to have a lot of consistency in it. So it's hard to negotiate with something that's, I don't want to say it's necessarily arbitrary, but it is like a, you know, opinion-type thing. So it's hard to, from our clients or for other people in the future to negotiate with this because, you know, it's trying to make someone happy who doesn't like what you're building at the end of the day. And, you know, there is a constitutional issue with depriving them the ability to build what they want on the property, right? I mean, that's an important reason why, in limitation on what the HRRB is, it isn't really stated anywhere other than this has to substantially affect. So, yeah, if you remand, you know, the instructions need to be clear that it, or at least I'm requesting that they're clear, that they operate within the guidelines that they're allowed to, and they cite the Department of the Interior regulations, that they demonstrate with some significant evidence that this does substantially adversely affect the neighborhood and how. I mean, there weren't pictures or anything about what the actual view is from the street. I mean, there's a fence and there's trees in the way, and clients have pictures, you barely see it from the street in the summertime even. So, you know, yeah, I guess that's my only request.
If I can, then if I can. So my instruction would be to work with the architect or the architect that did give the presentation. Was there any discussion, I want to ask this before I give this instruction, was there any discussion as to what their solution might be given the shed where it's at right now? Or was it just a description as to why it would not fit within there? So my instruction would be to consult with somebody of, an architect or somebody whose background is in historic preservation to see if any or all of the structure could be used in, as a compromise. And that determination and solution needs to come from that expertise. Now, that should be in the arena of the Historic Resources Review Board and not us because it was the Historic Resources Review Board that hired the expert. So, you know, if we are to remand, I still think it should be, there should be an expert consulted, but, you know, hopefully there is flexibility with that person if our request is to find some solution or some compromise. That's my recommendation, if we are to remand it.
Yeah.
Counselor?
Sounds, and correct me if I'm wrong, there's a lot of gray area here as far as building a shed in that area. And I don't think the residents should be penalized for all the loopholes and gray areas. So I don't want to drag it out. I want to get it closed up, resolved ASAP, and that's my opinion.
Mr. Garland, taking what Counselor Castro said, and I don't disagree with him, but we as a council, do we have the authority to do that over the Historic Resources Review Board?
To grant the, to grant, yes. So as a body, the council's empowered by the code to essentially reverse the HRRB's denial of the CMA.
Can I ask? I have some question. So if we were to do that, does the HRRB then allow us to decide they can paint it yellow with pink polka dots if they want to? In other words, if we say it's okay to build it, do they still have to comply with any recommendations or advice from the HRRB after this? Or does it just revert back to the same structure, same colors, same materials, it'll just be too tall, so to speak? Do you know what I'm saying? Like, does it?
Counselor, the, if this council were to reverse the decision of the HRRB, then the instrument that denied, or that was denied, the application for the certificate of appropriateness would be revived. And the certificate of appropriateness would issue based on that application, which is essentially what is built, what exists in that yard would be finished, essentially.
Without any, I'm curious what color it's going to be.
Well, the application said it was going to match and complement the house.
So this was really about the height, really?
Right. So if they did paint it yellow with purple polka dots, that would not be in compliance with what the application was.
Exactly, okay. That's.
So in your packet, Counselor, there was, the applicant proposed some colors that I believe would be completely appropriate.
Okay.
They're not proposing polka dots and.
So everything else applies to this? It's just?
Correct. They submitted that as part of their revised application.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Castro?
This is irrelevant, but in defense of codes and planning, I've built two new houses in the city of Auburn in the last seven years, and both planning and codes have been absolutely fantastic. Granted, I'm not in historic areas, but they've been fantastic.
Any further discussion, Counselors? So, Mr. Garland, I'm going to go to you. My thought is to have one or more motions to take either step one, open door one or open door two, and then, boy, I don't know what better way to say it, but does that sound reasonable? Or a third option would be to table it.
Yes, although that seems like that would be not appealing to too many people. Respectfully, Mr. Mayor.
You want to table it?
No. If I may, or unless you have.
If you're going to make a motion, I was just asking.
I'm not going to make a motion.
Okay. I want to give everyone an opportunity to speak. So go ahead, Counselor Cuddy, please.
All I want to do is, I understand Counselor Castro's wanting to move this law. I do as well. I just don't want to set a precedent to the Historic Resources Review Board, you know, like that we choose those people to be experts when they can't, you know, make those determinations, they hire actual architects to come up with these determinations. And I do apologize to the homeowners for the mixed messages within the various departments. And again, as the mayor said, it's something that we need to look at and to make sure that this doesn't happen as often. But I don't want to table it because it's not fair to them. The sooner we get to some resolution, the more specific, the detail that we could give the Historic Resources Review Board and the expert to come up with some compromise with the homeowners, I think the better it will be. But I personally do not want to set the precedent that we, you know, can do this given, again, Mr. McCarthy, you stated your case, and I've been approached by the homeowners about this. So I'm aware of the case. And it's just, to me, it's just one of those unfortunate mixed, you know, the departments and commissions unfortunately did not have the same communication infrastructure that would have helped them. So, you know, I just, I'm still sticking with the remanding, with the instruction that if the Historic Resources Review Board cannot come up with a compromise, that the architect work with the homeowners to try to find some compromise. And that determination would be final with the Historic Resources Review Board, hopefully.
Counselor, if I may, I think that certainly can be the subtext from this council. However, I think it would be helpful to think about, you know, this body is a group of people that volunteer their time to get things done for the city of Auburn, right? The taxpayers of the city of Auburn. You're not in get-things-done mode right now. You're in judge mode. And when judges remand something to a lower court, they don't say, well, just, you know, as you've said, right, and I think wisely suggested, work with someone to come up with a solution that everyone can, you know, be happy with. They say, no, you, you, the lower body, the lower court messed up. You didn't do something right. And I would propose that any instructions that upon remand include at least this and perhaps be limited to instructions that the HRRB review the case and apply the standards of the Secretary of the Interior. That is the cleanest way to do this legally and is what a, an appellate court, an appellate body, how it's how they interact with the lower body. Hopefully, I'm being clear here. But I would propose that the remand be limited in its scope.
So that the Secretary, the Department of the Interior is abiding, is binding? Is that what you're saying?
Well, Counselor's argument, I think, can be summed up in that the HRRB, the legal argument is that the HRRB did not apply properly the Secretary of the Interior's standards. And if this council were to remand the case back to the HRRB, proper instruction, legal instruction would be, take another look at this and apply the, properly apply the standard set by the Secretary of the Interior. And then hopefully, from that point, you know, consensus can be sought and things can happen that will make the homeowner happy and make, you know, the historic district whole. But I would just caution in trying to do too much with the remand.
Is that specific enough as far as the remand with instruction?
Yes, I think it would be. And, you know, you're, I agree with your role as judges here, and you're interpreting the code that you wrote. It might not have been you, but, you know, this was the HRRB operating under the city code. And again, the sections, I think it's Article 178 that controls them, you're making sure they're operating within the bounds that you, the council, have set for them. So, and that includes the Secretary of the Interior guidelines. So, yeah, I think that would be sufficient enough so long as it also included a reference to the proper code section as well.
I would agree with that. I mean, I would propose that.
I mean, don't get me wrong, I'd like you to reverse it, but if you're going to remand, that would be as best as we can get. I do believe reversal is appropriate here, but, yeah, given the, just want to make that clear.
Anyone else? Counselor, I, Counselor Cuddy, I think what I understood from you, you would be comfortable with, or most attorneys have said, to a point, as far as remanding this, or just getting out in front of the bus, basically, for us to remand it onto the court system. Am I correct?
Remand it to the?
Yeah.
Remand it to HRRB?
HRRB, okay.
Yes. With the specific instruction that they adhere to the Secretary of the Interior's guidelines.
And as Mr. McCarthy stated, the, also, the historic, the appropriate sections of the historic preservation code. I believe that was his request.
Yes.
So are you at this point, are you ready to make a motion, Counselor?
I would like to make a motion.
But I would ask for this, just so we're all clear, I would ask you to work with Mr. Garland for, we'll take a 10-minute recess, work with Mr. Garland so we have, which is in the best interests of the city and trying to help our neighbors here to come to some resolution in regards to this.
That sounds good. So.
10-minute recess. Does that sound agreeable, Counselor, or do you want to change that?
Just to make sure that the motion is properly stated. Okay.
Yes, yes. So.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, no, please do.
Well, if, it sounded just like there may be some votes for straight reversal. Far be it for me to be the parliamentarian, but if you're going to do a reversal anyways, then you don't need to work out the crafting language of a motion for remand. So as a proposal, if there were a vote on the reversal and that were passed, then we don't need the recess and we can all be done here. Just a suggestion.
So we have three attorneys in the room. We're going to need all three before the night is over. Mr. Garland, or Stacy, please correct me if I'm wrong, we do have a motion started on the floor. We do not have a second, I don't believe. There was a second?
I'm going to motion to finish the shed and reverse.
Okay. A second. Which one?
Counselor Castro's.
All right. Does anyone want a second, Counselor Cuddy?
Well, we would have to vote, we have to vote on it.
We got one on the floor now.
Well, you had a motion on the floor, it wasn't seconded, but now we have the other motion on the floor, right? Which was.
Well, proper procedure, if you had a motion, is there a second for that?
We should have. There's no second. So it's not on?
Save it, save it again, please.
Nobody seconded Counselor Cuddy's motion, so.
So we do have a motion and a second on the floor. Would you care to repeat your motion?
Reverse it, complete the shed.
I'll second him.
Is that clear with everyone now? Mr. Garland, does that work for you?
Yes.
Discussion, further discussion? Clerk review call the rules in regards to the motion. And if you read it back, if you have.
Sure. A motion by Counselor Castro, seconded by Counselor Genatino, that would allow, you know, basically reverse the decision of the HRRB to allow for the shed to be completed as approved by the zoning board, I believe you would say.
That's correct, Counselor. Correct, Counselor. Genatino, your discussion?
I would like to say why I'm seconding that.
Please.
I feel, even though it's not in their purview. I feel, even though it's not in our purview, if the code says the height has to be less than twenty feet, H R, H R R B should have asked the height of the structure. And I also feel that if they went for a variance to zoning, I think our code is, is defective, I guess, in, in the sense that it doesn't automatically send it back to H R R B because there's a C O A, certificate of appropriateness there. It gives them the option, I think we need to look at that and whether or not it should be sent back to H A, H R R B. There seems to be some wires getting crossed there. So that, that's why I'm seconding Counselor Castro's motion.
I'll second, Counselor. Any due, Counselor?
I'm going to agree back with you. It just seems like there's so much red tape that's got to be straightened out to put a shed in a historic area that it shouldn't fall back on them. It just seems like there's so many areas to go to to get a shed that they're getting dragged into it. So I think that this should be a learning experience to move forward with the next person that wants a shed to get the rules straight.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
I just want to mention that H R R B performs an extremely important service to our community and has for many years, and I really respect their work.
No further discussion. Clerk could you call the roll in regards to the motion by Counselor Castro, seconded by Counselor Genetino? Counselor Kent?
Yes.
Counselor Genetino?
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy?
No.
Counselor Castro?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
The motion carried. Anything from our guest attorney, our regular, our regular attorney?
Nothing further.
No, thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, thank you. Anything else from the council? Public, second public to be heard? Is anyone desiring to be heard? Please, if you're done.
I will be brief. I know everybody wants to go home and enjoy the night. Mayor Quill, members of the city council, members of the dais, Mrs. DeForest back there and attending guests. My name's Timothy Donovan, I reside at the twenty-three Shadell Place here at Auburn. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Kew County Mental Health Task Force. Just this past Friday, well, let me say, May is national, recognized as National Mental Health Month. And Auburn has a series of events planned for the month of May to bring light to the mental health awareness. And quickly, last Friday, the, one of our first public events happened right across the street at the Heritage Center. It was a business walk, we encouraged the businesses downtown to join us for that one hour, to be a part of the mental health awareness event for that day. Our new Kewa County Director of Community Services, Lauren Walsh, did a wonderful presentation. A number of our community providers with alcohol substance abuse, many stakeholders, individuals saw her today from Nix Wright, we are all there in support. And I want to thank the city of Auburn for providing the Heritage Center for us to use outside their wonderful circle and what they provided to us. So, but I'm here tonight, our second event is, is the recovery walk that we're recognizing, the Timothy Durant Recovery Walk. And it's sponsored by the Auburn Drug and Alcohol Treatment Court, the Behavioral Court, the Felony Court, Unity House of Kewa County, Grace House, and Nix Wright. And for the past three years, due to the COVID restrictions, it prevented us from walking. So we're very happy that it's back this year, and it's scheduled for May seventeenth at six P M. on Tuesday, and our location is the St. Street Mall. And Mayor Quill, you'll be there to proclaim that day, and that, along with National Treatment Court Month and Mental Health Month. So we welcome your presence. And we're also going to celebrate by walking from Clymer Street, Exchange Street here to Clymer Street and back. It's just an annual walk of recognition. And I want to invite all members of council to please join us. We're hoping for good weather. And let me just say this, you know, on the flyer here, and this is in the recognition of the loved ones who's lost their lives, who didn't have successful recovery. If my parting has left a void, then fill it with remembering joy. So please join us, and we'd love to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dugger, do I request for executive session?
Mayor, I have, I'll do my best to be brief, but we have four matters made confidential under attorney by privilege that we need to move along in the interest of doing the business of the city.
I didn't, did he say yes? At this point, entertain a motion for executive session. Excuse me, Counselor Kat, seconded by Counselor Castro. Call the roll, clerk, it's your convenience. Motion for executive session, seven thirty-seven P M. Counselor Kent?
Yes.
Counselor Genetino?
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Castro?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Before we go into executive session, I just want to remind everyone that tomorrow morning at seven forty-five, Operation Enduring Freedom will be leaving the Armory, they will be stopping here at City Hall, so hopefully all the council can make it, if you can, and the general public. I'd like to give these veterans a, a grand send, so. We're in executive session.
Your wife's going to call your son, just sitting over the green cheddar stairs.
I know, it's like I missed it.